My name is Aaron Mesh. I'm the managing editor.
Hi, Aaron.
Oh, that's been Aaron.
Sorry that I'm late. And sorry for the sort of informal attire. I've been on the road all day. But it's very nice to have the four of you in with us this afternoon. This is an interview for city council District One. I believe if memory serves, that is the East Portland district.
Correct.
So let's get started. So this is an interview intended to help us get to know you better and decide whether or not we'll be endorsing you. We will be endorsing, in every single city council race, we are endorsing six candidates in descending order, the same way that people can vote on their ballots. And so...
Just curious, what if a candidate withdraws after you guys have made a decision to endorse?
Then... I don't know what we'd do in that scenario, honestly.
Probably the same thing they do. That vote goes to somebody else.
Yeah, exactly.
Probably, yeah.
So maybe we put it on our website. I don't know. That's an interesting question, but I need to finish my introduction.
Oh, yes, sorry, no worries.
This is an interview intended to get to know each of you. We're going to be asking questions. You are welcome to engage with each other, but we can't promise equal time, meaning that like not necessarily going to ask the same number of questions to each of you. Without further ado, let's get started. Kale, we're going to start with you. Can you give us a brief introduction? Tell us about yourself, your biography, and why it is that you're running for this office.
I, my name is Kale Turn, and I am a community advocate and organizer. I serve on the Reynolds School Board currently. I am also the president of my Yumian community.
Your which community?
Yumian community. We are a small ethnic group, ethnic minority of Laos. We, we, myself and my parents immigrated here as refugees back in 1980. And I am running to represent the people of East Portland. East Portland was my home since I was a, since I came to the United States and left for a little bit, but came back and came back in 2003 and made my home here since then. I have seen changes in Portland, and I think we are headed in the wrong direction. It feels unsafe in lots of parts of town. Our part of Portland seems to be unsafe in lots of different ways. Our sidewalks are non-existent in some places. We have a mountain that is non-existent. We have areas that are still dark. We have homeless campsites around where I live. And I'd like to see us do better. I'd like to see us help and serve our homeless communities a little bit better. I'd like for us to make our communities safer. I myself, of the Asian community, have experienced the hate and racism. I have known neighbors and friends who have experienced hate and racism. We need to do better with emergency response times for our officers, our ambulance drivers, and just in general, first responders need to be able to do better. And I'd like to see this happen. I'd like to see us do better in our neighborhoods. I'd like to see us do better in terms of traffic, in terms of walkability, in terms of shade equity. I'd like to see our part of Portland look like the more affluent parts of town. And that is why I'm running.
Thank you so much. Peggy Su?
My name is Peggy Su Owens. I'm from Bandan, Oregon. I moved up here to go to Portland State. I've been here over 40 years. I live in Southeast Portland in the Lenz neighborhood. I work in Northeast Portland off of 122nd and Airport. I think most of us here are pretty much in agreement that we're underserved in our area. We're tired of people who don't live in our neighborhood making decisions for our neighborhood or not even asking us what we want. Things get voted in, and as Kale mentioned, we don't have proper lighting. We don't have proper sidewalks. But yet they keep doing other things that we could care less about, spending a lot of money in the wrong places.
Like on...
Okay, so a lot of us are angry about what they're doing with our traffic. For Juan Foster Avenue. We have a beautiful bike trail at Springwater Trail that we spent millions of dollars on. When they decided, made the decision to go one lane on Foster, everybody in Southeast is like, no. We have too many, too many houses going out. There's only so many roads that go through. Sunnyside, Powell, Foster, et cetera. And they built, they doubled the housing in that area. But yet we took away a lane of traffic. I just went to a transportation meeting recently, and everybody in Portland is begging for an additional lane on 205 because of the additional traffic. They're actually talking about taking one away. So they're not listening to us. And it's frustrating. And every night, okay, so the neighbor app or the Ring app, there's a crime every night. The city council, the last city council, made the decision to defund the police. They didn't ask if we wanted it. They didn't care if we wanted it. They just did it.
Well, they didn't defund the police, did they?
Yeah. They, well, not completely, but they shut down entire units of police.
Yeah, there's no question. They reduced the police budget in 2020.
Yeah.
I thought the whole thing. I was like, maybe I missed something.
No, it was, they were pushing for full defunding. And I'm sorry, but when I call a police officer or I need help, I want a police officer. If I call an ambulance or a fire truck or something of that sort. I believe in police transparency, and I think they need to be more accountable. I'm a firm believer in body cams and things of that sort. But once again, I want a cop when I need a cop. I don't want to have to wait three hours. We do need more mental health services on our police department. There's no reason why we shouldn't have it, but right now we have no budget for training. We've actually lost, we just met with a gentleman from Inverness, and they've even had to cut a lot of their classes, even though they've gotten, I'd say, a higher class of criminal, more violent, more vicious, instead of their middle class of criminal that they used to get. But yet we took away the training for those officers on how to deal with those types of crimes. We just need better services in our neighborhood.
And not the ones that are coming top-down.
Exactly. We have a lot of people that are running for office that are, have very impressive backgrounds, and they're very smart. But all of them have an agenda. We just want what's best for our neighborhoods. There are some of us running just because we're just, we want to be able to walk our streets. We want to be able to go back to the park. I used to jog at the park at night. You don't go to our park at night anymore.
Which one?
I live right by Lenz Park.
Yeah.
You know, we've had a lot of stuff happen, obviously, in the last couple of years. Couple of them very unfortunate. They could have been avoided, hopefully, but it is, it's done, and we just need to move forward, and we need to find ways to move forward.
I'm going to stop you there because we need to keep doing our introductions. Dion?
Yes, so I'm Dion Salazar. I am someone who is part of everything, I believe, that makes District One unique. We are the youngest district. We are the most diverse. We have the most people with disabilities. And we also have the most immigrants, as well as also, I believe, the most churches. So that's more of a guess than an actual fact. And I am someone who has lived a unique life experience, I believe will bring our community together due to the experience and my skill set. So I am a 24-year Latino, former foster youth with autism, who identifies as a mainstream Christian Presbyterian without the predestination thing. And I am someone who has worked and fought for several communities my whole life. In fact, from the moment I was born, my life was going to be political. When I was three years old, I was diagnosed with autism. The doctors said that I would never be able to accomplish what I've been able to accomplish now. At the age of 12, we moved to, at the age of 11, we moved from my home state of Salt Lake City, Utah, to Portland, though I did live briefly in San Diego from three to seven. And then my mother got by them partner, and he was very abusive. So he, so I went and ended up going from foster care on the east side of 82nd, east of 205, where I've been now half my life. And in the meantime, he, to this day, you can look this up, his name is Jordan Hotchkiss, is continually getting arrested, including on, I believe, attempted kidnapping or something of that sort, so. And so I'm someone who has experienced all sorts of things. I grew up with a mother who tried to ensure that I had the widest diet possible to make sure that I would be able to truly develop, and I'm grateful for that. And that's led me to really rejecting a lot of false choices that we currently see here in Portland. I got involved as a Multinational Democratic Party leader soon after graduation while taking a job training program. Then I had to handle the sexual harassment thing by Diego Hernandez. So I was the only district leader who had to handle that. Nobody else was interested in getting the rest of the county party involved. That was tricky, but after a few months of waiting for the investigation to play out, I decided that enough was enough, and I called on him to resign. I even sent out the media at the time. Though nobody reported on it, unfortunately. So I sent from the official Mult Dems sort of like district leader account, which I no longer have access to, but you're free to, you know, ask them for confirmation. And from that, I also got on the Organizing Commission on Autism as a self-advocate for the community and now a Social Services co-chair, where I fought consistently for a few things: mental health care, investing in that, and ensuring that we're also de-clinicalizing it. We need to ensure that we are investing in community-based and people-based mental and emotional health care because we as humans have a social regulation function through relationships. And we've tended to forget that when we are focusing on mental health care. We can't just have it be clinical or just doing them with pills. And I do both, mind you. But we need to have a more holistic, universal approach. And second, I've been a long-term advocate for workforce development, alternative career pathways like trades, small businesses. My mother got a journalism degree in college before she had me, coincidentally also at the age of 24. And she still ended up having to work in minimum wage jobs. In fact, from the time we were in Utah, from the ages, when I was seven to the age of 11, she worked literally at 7-Eleven, a minimum wage job, but eventually ended up becoming a manager. And so I know what it's like. In fact, I often would go with her when she was, when I was being babysat. Maybe she didn't even have a babysitter some days. So I saw the working, the working life, all eight hours of it on occasion. And then I also have been fighting, in fact, I also believe that's a way to expand not just homeownership, but deal with homelessness crisis, and also ensure that we are investing in every single person because District One is the poorest district. So the way we counter that is by granting them alternative career pathways and building infrastructure and the systems to allow them to really improve their lives. And then lastly, the third major thing I fought for, and it started, I suppose, with reporting my, on that, you know, person who abused me and my mother, was government accountability, or accountability in general, frankly. Because I think that too often people are given free passes while we need to be doing better for our fellow people as individuals and when it comes to government, we need to be doing better as well. I was the only person with the guts to write a resolution, for example, to try to hold Shemia Fagan accountable when that scandal broke out. She eventually resigned, and then I continued, I decided to rework the thing, but by the, but then I was also running the school board at the time, so I had to suspend, so to spend that eventually. And I've also, so those are my big three things I really fought for.
Excellent.
And, all right.
Yeah, I think let's, let's roll on here. We got limited time.
Okay, my name is Mike Sands. I'm retired. I was a trial attorney. I was a law professor and a Superior Court Judge pro tem. I've lived here in Portland now for 12 years, moved up here in retirement.
Oh, cool.
And I'm at the Cherrywood Village Retirement Community. I have previously served on the Sacramento City Council for eight years, and it's particularly relevant to this position because I was there when we converted from citywide elections to district elections. And I was significantly involved in that transfer. I am familiar with the district form of election and how it affects constituent services, which is quite significant for this plan. The reason I am running, however, is totally different than any other candidate that you've accounted. I am running, and this sounds maybe silly, but I'm running to restore democracy to city council elections. Why don't we have a democratic form of government? What we have is a system of election which was put into effect by a separate election in 2022 that allows a candidate such as myself or any one of these others to win the election with 25% of the vote, while 75%, a huge majority, oppose that candidate. I do not consider that to be a democratic form of elections. And why do we have this form of elections? It was because, I believe, a small group of people known as the Charter Revision Commission, or something similar to that, rigged the election in 2022.
Rigged? Like, like actually, like, how?
Yes, I'm going to explain that. This commission had three areas of concern. One, the form of city government. Everybody opposed the present form of five council members running the bureaucracies. It was pretty well-accepted in Portland that we wanted something different. And they gave this to us. They took away the administrative function, and the city council is now going to be strictly legislative. Okay. Then they had to decide, what is the council going to be consist of? And they chose what I thought was a rather unusual, but certainly acceptable, plan of 12 members with a mayor who was not a member of the council, but who will sit to break any ties.
Forgive me for interrupting. We're familiar with the former government that was chosen in the last election. Could you tell us how it was rigged?
Yes. What they did, they had to choose what election system they were going to use. And they had many choices. And in fact, there was a specific proposal to set up a council of nine members, including the mayor, and then have eight districts with one member being elected from each district. They rejected that. They chose a system, which we have now, of four districts with three each. Then what they did is, in effect, they deprived the public from choosing what kind of program they wanted. They linked this system of election to the council proposal so that if you wanted reform of the city council, you had no choice but to accept this form of election.
I see. So, so, I understand. So let me ask this question, which is going to be a question for all of you. And I have a feeling this will connect to what you're talking about. What's the first thing you'll do if elected? What's the first resolution you'll introduce on city council? I'm guessing, I'm going with him first, so I'm guessing it has to do with overturning the ranked choice voting system that was implemented, but maybe not.
Yes, and I want to make clear, I am not opposed in any way to ranked choice voting. We're using that system for mayor and for city auditor, and it's perfectly good. It's, in fact, it's, I think, better than the primary general election system. It's done at one time, saves a lot of money. But we're talking about a modified ranked choice voting. And yes, what would I do if elected? First thing I would do is start studying all the potential methods of voting. And I would try to get enough support from the council, if I can, to place on the ballot a measure that will require every elected city official to receive a majority vote, 50% plus one. No one can be elected without the majority vote. So that's in general terms what I am campaigning for.
Great, thank you. Your first resolution that you introduce?
Yes. So first off, we need a council that works. We need a council of people who know what they're doing. And so the first thing I would do, and the first thing I would introduce, is primarily just a nomination for someone who would lead us during the budgeting session so that we can get through the budgeting session and just be able to get that accomplished without having people run for, because there are probably going to be people going to be trying to run for Speaker of the City Council or President of the City Council. And because that tends to happen under every system, I believe this is really no different. And so I believe that it is vital that we have a temporary person before we have that, so that we can get through the budgeting system with no chaos. Because we're facing a crisis here, so we need to move on that immediately. So that would be my first move. I would try to introduce that resolution. And then second, I would also be pushing tremendously to repeal the arts tax. I think that the arts tax is a tremendously flawed program. I think that if we can immediately deliver some sort of tax relief to Portlanders, we can show that this council will be one, will be one of action, not of words. So if we do those two simple things, which are not big or bold, aggressive proposals, then we will be able to restore confidence in city council, which will create more engagement and allow us to push for bigger things later on, which I am very much on board for, like empowerment of the auditor, and then there's lots of other policies that I'll get into later that we need to do.
Nice. What's your first resolution?
Well, actually, I'm kind of anti-resolution. I'm on the accountability side. I want to know what's being spent, where it's being spent, why it's being spent there. And I want people to actually answer that question for us. My big move is neighborhood livability. We have lots of things that would make that happen. I'd like the police force to learn to work with the task force. You know, oversight. We need better lighting. We need better sidewalks. We need our streets fixed. We need to stop spending money on things that don't matter. So I'm kind of the anti... I lost my word. Anti-agenda.
Sure, sure.
I want to know where every dime is.
Sure, well, going back to that, actually, the question we've been asking some candidates, I think, would be interesting here, is which bureau in the city do you think most is in need of an audit?
Lots of them, all of them.
Sure.
Well, number one.
One would be nice.
The police department. Let's start there.
Great. First resolution?
Resolution, so, I can tell you, I'm not one to just make resolutions without looking into, but what I would probably do with a small donors program is put a cap on donations. Instead of having people be able to fund obscene amounts of money into their campaign, cap it and spread it wider to folks who, to give people a better opportunity.
What would you cap it at?
I'd cap it at the first tier. I think it's reasonable at $40,000 in the first tier. And then you're giving, giving other people maybe lesser, making the requirements a little bit less instead of $250,000, maybe $2,000, you know, make it easier for folks to get a little help. So that's probably something that I would do. As far as auditing goes, I definitely think we need to audit the police department, the Portland Police Bureau, not because looking to reduce funds. I think we need to fund it at a good amount, like the right amount. They need to have enough resources to be able to respond to incidents, to be able to, you know, attend trainings, to be able to just operate. I think they operate similar to any business, where if you are shorthanded in one area, it rolls into different areas of, you know, of the business. So I'd audit, get a better idea of, you know, where the expenses are, and then make modifications, resolutions to adjust support.
Regarding audits, I would, I'm torn between an audit of the Water Bureau and a Prosper Portland. I think I can go with Prosper Portland. Right, right now, we are, I believe that we are clearly seeing a lot of high fees and like the long permitting process really make it harder to build housing. And so I think if we have an audit of that, and so we can know where every dollar is going, then that would be a great first step. But I also want to say there's really something that's not really a department, but definitely needs an audit. And why I'm proposing specifically a nonprofit oversight board, so that we can audit nonprofits. We need to know where our money is best being spent. I've been pushing for this, for this policy for a long time now. And I think that if we could do that, while also having consolidated information hub about every nonprofit in Portland, it would go a long way towards being able to spend more efficiently and know where our returns and investments are so that we can really ensure that we're maximizing the best use of our resources. Because that's going to be a critical thing that we're going to be, need to be doing in the future. And so that's going to be something that I would definitely prioritize. Maybe not my first thing, because that's a big, big thing, and that will definitely cause a lot of controversy, but it would definitely be one of the first things I would do.
Great. Do you have a division of the city or bureau that you'd want to audit?
No. I learned when I went on the city council how much we really don't know about how the city is working. And the first thing I like to do is gather facts and learn before I start making decisions. So I would need time to review all the bureaus before I decide where to concentrate on it. I'm also going to say I'm participating, but I just realized I did not put enough parking on my meter. So while you're talking, I'm just going to
Sure.
kind of extend some time, if that's okay.
That's quite all right. I'm curious, Kale, you brought up the subject of the small donor elections program, and I'm just curious why it is that you didn't qualify.
I had a whole bunch of Portland addresses. I had a whole bunch of Portland addresses that I thought, you know, was qualified. I didn't do, I didn't do my own, actually. I didn't really fully understand the requirements that made those counts, so I assume I did.
So you're saying you gathered, you gathered donations from people who lived outside the city was the problem?
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I just wasn't tracking it, like how, in hindsight, I probably could have done better, educated myself a little bit more about which, which donations were counted, which donations were not. You know, I think it's just one of those things where we wasn't familiar with the program or it wasn't familiar. So, so that was what caused it. And, and yeah, yeah, I think...
I'm seeing some agreement here. The two of you also find this to be a...
Well, I didn't participate in the small donor election. I don't think the city, I personally don't think the city of Portland should have to pay for me to apply for a job.
Okay.
But I do believe that it's a good, it's a good program, and it exists for a reason, but it is lopsided. It's extremely lopsided.
Again, I disagree, but I think it doesn't address the problem where the people that are going to be well-connected with resources are still going to be well-connected with resources, and the folks who are not are still going to lack the support. The idea that we want to fund viable candidates, yeah, but we also want to
Make it fair.
ensure that people can make themselves.
Yeah, so that's definitely a problem. And so let me tell you, my son was the beginning of this, was a bunch of high-level people, or people who were running themselves. And so I could have door-knocked on doors, but I believe that I simply made this, I made a decision that I believe it was too early to door-knock because, because when I was doing phone banking, because I was endorsed by Good Party pretty early on. When I was doing phone banking, people just were not in the mood to talk politics. And I think that's because people are burnt out. And this was before Kamala Harris entered the race. And so Joe Biden was very unpopular. People didn't have, you know, so a lot of people just clocked out. There are tons of people who are on my donor list who could have, you know, who previously donated campaigns who said they don't do politics or don't do politics anymore. And so that was definitely a big issue on my end. And I simply just didn't do enough door-knocking to offset that in my, in my, in my end. I was busy cycling through a couple staffers, so.
I'd like to finish my point in that I don't think it's a bad program. I'm not disappointed that I didn't make it. I'd just like to see it go across to more people and more people getting opportunities.
It's not a bad program.
I also had many candidates, of course, trying to do donation swapping as well, and it was, and...
I got asked for many.
Yeah, and, and it felt very uncomfortable, I'll be honest.
Sure.
It felt uncomfortable. I remember that, I believe, Tim Moore, yeah, Tim Moore Ender did that. Let's see, you could call my campaign manager, I believe, or, yeah, about that. And she's the only other witness at the time, so. And it felt very, so the smaller election program, I definitely think needs some tweaks. I think it's fundamentally a good program, but I think we should also lower the cost of it a little bit as well. I agree that capping is a great, capping number of donate, donations is the great move. I agree that capping is a great, capping number of donations is the great move. And I also think that also having maybe one more person who monitors the, you know, the donations would also be a good step for more, providing more transparency.
Great. Did you decide not to campaign for donations, or...
I made a decision right at the beginning that I would not accept any contributions. So I have not engaged in any of the swapping or any of that stuff. I am retired, I'm quite comfortable being retired. I felt that I had a message that I wanted to get out, I knew what it was, and I just didn't feel like I wanted to go into the fundraising. I've been disappointed when I have talked to several organizations that will not even consider endorsing me, or listening, even listening to what my position is, because I don't raise funds. But that's their choice, I'm just disappointed, I haven't been able to talk to them, specifically one of them was the Police Association. He asked what I was doing for fundraising, I said nothing, and he just said, well, we're not interested.
They flatter, there are several that have said, if you don't have a minimum of two hundred and fifty...
I think that was an inadvertent consequence, that I think can be solved by capping it, because finances is so involved in politics, that people see you as non-viable.
Exactly.
And it might be true, that you don't appear as viable, so they don't...
How do you get your message out without money, is it?
Exactly.
I guess a bunch of door-knocking.
Talking.
Door-knocking.
Go to these meetings, talk to people, go to the Neighborhood Association.
You need money.
Money's important.
I definitely agree you need money in order to run a valid campaign.
I'm not raising any.
Got it.
I'm with Mike.
Yeah, you gotta put in the hours.
Yeah.
Instead of the dollars. What, what do you make of the East Portland, you know, we have these stories about East Portland planting trees in East Portland and having them all die?
Yeah, that's...
And what, what do you think East Portland needs to become more climate resilient, you know, as things get hot? I mean, it's getting, it's getting crazy, especially in these neighborhoods without trees. Is there, is there a program that you could see helping in East Portland? Let me go this way this time.
Friends of Trees? They are a great program that helps with neighborhoods, getting trees up, and they also provide a, you know, help with...
Yeah, they have their trees and all that.
And I just think they need, we need to find more, more organizations like that. There are several other organizations that do this type of work, that don't get as much money as they should. We tend to talk about being, you know, with shade equity and all that, but we do that without giving them resources, so it's, you know, you don't give them the resources, and yeah, we don't walk it. And so what we need to do is go, go back and walk the talk. If we are going to talk about shade equity, and that's something that gets talked about a lot in Portland, but doesn't get invested in. We need to give people that we believe in, we need to give people these projects, fund them, so they're more capable.
And then water the trees.
Yeah.
I'm also a big fan of Friends of Trees. They give away trees in our neighborhood on a regular basis, they have, they meet down at the park. I'm lucky enough to live in a neighborhood that has a lot of trees, but I will have to laugh, I have several trees in my yard. And I had a neighbor who was a little unhappy with one of my trees that comes this far under the sidewalk, and he calls the city on me on a regular basis, used to, he passed away. They would come out and they would tell me, you have to cut your tree way back, you need to get rid of this tree, you need to get rid of this tree. And I'm like, your last thing, so that you wanted to plant a minimum of this many trees, and you want this many trees in each neighborhood, but you want me to get rid of mine? I'm from a logging and fishing community, we log, there are trees, we love trees, I believe in replanting, and we have neighbor, we have parks that have no trees. And like you said, neighborhoods where it's hot, people have no shade. And yeah, there's, there's no water to them, there's no funding for these programs. We've opened a few new parks, but we haven't funded them.
Yeah, same, same idea then, okay.
Yeah.
People are extremely underfunded.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another matter.
People also maintain some of our trees, they need to be funded as well.
Yes, people definitely is underfunded. And so regarding that, and shade equity, we act, I agree, but this also connects to a bigger issue, infrastructure. We, you know, we plant a tree, we don't do anything, but we also put the, you know, which is a problem itself, mind you, but we also put the burden of sidewalks and everything on small business owners.
And residents.
Exactly, exactly. And that's, that's, that's a big problem when it comes to people being able to open a small business, and also is a problem when, when you are relying on these same people to do, to water the trees, and make sure that they are getting enough stuff like that. And then of cour, you know, and then of course you have all, how their roots are forced to go wide instead of down, which is somewhat harmful as well. So we need to really invest in actually making it easy to own a business, which is why I think zoning reforms, which is like ensuring that people can have businesses under their homes will be a good thing. And also, I thought about this for a brief, for, only for a brief moment, but why not start planting more trees even on top of buildings, even, or, and also, we could employ the homeless population maybe to, to, you know, water the trees and stuff like that, help them, because Roosevelt did that, the Civilian Conservation Corps. There's no reason why we can't do that as well. And it would, and it would definitely help, instead of them just contributing to things, you know, getting less clean, and that would be something that would also build some goodwill towards the community, toward that.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I'm in the westernmost portion of the district, and where we live, we actually have thriving trees. It's been one of the lovely things about where I've been living. Since the campaign has started, I have been expanding my activities to the east, and I recognize I've got a lot to learn about this district. It's a very large geographical district, and I'll be the first to say, I am not familiar with all parts of it. So I need to do that. I think we had a very active program in Sacramento, we're known as the city of trees, because it is so hot there, that even back before air conditioning, they knew enough to start planting trees, and we've been very successful. And I think programs like that can be used up here as well. There's no question in my mind that this district has been short-changed for a long time. And I think that because of going to a district form of government, many of these things can be remedied.
Should we go to the fun one?
Sure. Before we go to the fun one, I just want to give each candidate one opportunity to, to give a closing statement about why it is that we should consider...
Yeah, so first off though, one thing I didn't get to mention is that I think you need Department of Homelessness and Housing, just as well, and Small Business Office, these are things I think would also help in that regard. Anyway, so the reason I believe that you should endorse me is quite simple. I am someone who has worked both professionally and with lived experience with all the core parts of our district that is often underrepresented. People with special needs, for example, are key, are a key part of Portland, and it seems like almost nobody seems to recognize that, except the activists, and I think that's a big problem in itself. So I also am someone who has worked and fought for the solutions that Portland needs for several years now, alternative career pathways, getting people off the streets and taking sheltering camping sites, where they are provided with workforce development, job training, mental health care, sobering services, all of that, coordinating with Project Respond, Community Health Assess and Treat, and PSR, and also with school, so there are also school, district career development centers that actually do that. So we need to coordinate a lot better. And I'm someone who has not just, you know, rejected false choices, I alluded to, but I've created and consolidated and combined lots of new ideas to really make things function a lot better, because I'm dedicated to solving problems, that's why I'm fighting for my communities. So I believe if you elect, that if you endorse me, and elect me, then I would be someone who would be able to cut through all the fluff, see where all the problems are, and be able to push aggressively to solve these problems, and be able to get other people on board. Because I've been called affable so many times by my fellow City Council candidates, and I have the record and the experience to back it up, on, I'm endorsed by Portland City Council, Mingus Maps, as well as Progress Latino, and also, I've worked for several years on government commissions, where my priorities have been able to come to the forefront with my pushing of them. And when I step away, they tend to falter. I think that in itself showcases the influence I'm able to do.
I would like to point out that when I was on the City Council in Sacramento, we changed to the district form, we also changed the role of the vice mayor. Prior to that, a vice mayor was a ceremonial role that was selected by the other council members, who would go out when the mayor wasn't available and give a speech, or cut a ribbon, or whatever. When we went to districts, I was selected as the first vice mayor, and I used that position to reorganize the council. We, I, at my suggestion, cut many of the committees which weren't functioning, set up a system where each council member could flourish with whatever their interest was. Instead of rotating the vice mayorship then every year, the fellow, my other council members came back and said, we want you to stay in that position, we are functioning. And so rather than a ceremonial position, I helped the entire council work efficiently. As you've probably observed, I tend to listen more than speak, but I think I am a good listener, I understand issues, I work very well with people, which I think is established by the fact that for four consecutive years I was selected as vice mayor, and the reason I gave it up is because I became acting mayor. The mayor resigned in the middle of a term, and because I was vice mayor, I stepped up to the acting mayor position. I think I know what I am doing, I think I am competent, and if I am elected to the City Council, I think I'll be able to work. You will have twelve people who basically don't know each other at all, and it's going to be hard to get everybody working together. I think I have the experience to help us all work together better.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I think y'all should endorse me, because, I think y'all should. No, I, I have experience serving a lot of boards and, you know, and community organizations. And I see this council as an opportunity to represent your district. I believe in just that. I see it as an extension of community advocacy and, you know, community engagement. I see it as an opportunity to bring resources into your district where you didn't get to better your communities. And, you know, I, I have experience in doing that. As a rental school board director, I, you know, worked together with an intensive restoring body to bring, bring, bring funds to support student engagements, community engagements. As a civic engagement manager with Apoно, I brought in funds to support Southeast Asian Pacific Islander communities who have been underserved in philanthropy. And as a community president, the union community president, I have grown connections and networks to, to, to support and preserve our culture. These are things that I have done to really just support community. I believe I have the experience in governance, in advocacy, and I have the relationships to be able to be successful as a representative of a district. I see this as a representative, not as a person who in the form of government would be a commissioner heading a department. I see us as an extension of the community, and I have the experience to do that.
Thank you.
Mine is pretty much different than everyone here. The name of my campaign is the Common Sense Campaign. I am a resident of my district, I own a small company in my district. I'm tired of politics, as usual. I think a lot of people are tired of politics, as usual. I think I bring a different perspective, because I'm not on all of these boards and all of these commissions, and I haven't worked for governors and mayors and things like this. I have worked with politics, I've been active in the veterans for forty-plus years, but I'm not a politician. I think what we need is a couple of people, at least two or three of us, that are not career politicians. We just, we bring a slightly different perspective to the board.
Great.
Call me a career politician, I'm only twenty-four, you know!
We love you, Cale. Arch-chip, wow! Damn.
All right, so the fun question...
You are affable.
The fun question is, what were you best known for in high school?
Like, did you win, like, where you voted something, or was your, were you an athlete? Were you...
Those are embarrassing questions.
I guess I can go first, so. I was known as a nerd, I would study all sorts of things, history, and that's led to me being a policy wonk, actually, a policy nerd, like I was a policy researcher for Ronald Calabria's campaign. And so I've always been someone who just loves learning, frankly. I love to learn, I love to learn and take things that are applicable, and that's something that I was quite well-known for. I've made, made fun of, of course, being, I was bullied, because I was an autistic person in the early to mid-twenty teens, that's pretty difficult, so. But that also means I'm someone who has overcome a lot of adversity in life, and who also built social network from scratch. I didn't have close friends until, until I was like a teenager, so. So that's something that, that's a sort of unique thing that I have when it comes to high school.
I was both involved in athletics and student government, but the most enjoyable thing I can remember from high school was in my senior year, I was selected to head the committee that wrote up each graduating student with something amusing about them that we could publish. And getting together with a committee and putting that together was just one of the most enjoyable things I've ever done, and I still remember, and it's quite a few years now, some of the things that we wrote up about other...
What they read about you?
What?
What you write about you, or did somebody write something about you?
Somebody else had to take care of it.
What'd they say?
I don't even remember that. I can just remember some of the funny things I thought about other people.
Sure.
Did we get everybody?
No, just Cale's too. So, what then, what would I be known for? I didn't have a very good experience in high school. As a refugee, we experienced a lot of racism and things like that growing up in school, so I had a tough time. I was probably known as the kid who were less likely to succeed in anything, I was probably known as a troublemaker. You know, that was, that was something that was really hard for me growing up. I went to, got in a lot of trouble, went into, went to continuation school, graduated from there, had to work extra hard to catch up and graduate, you know, at the university, came back and got a master's degree in Portland State, but it was a real journey. Part of the reason why I am doing the work that I do in our school board and our community is there are so many people that are experiencing challenges similar to that, and I wanted to do better for people that who share the same experience, and for people to do better. It sounds kind of corny.
No, no, it's a good reason.
But that's, that's why I am doing what I am doing today.
I never really felt like I fit in in high school, although I did all the normal high school things. I was a jock, I, basketball, football, you know, broke my jaw playing football.
Nice.
After I got hurt and took out my knees, I was a cheerleader. That year, they let the athletes vote in the cheerleaders, so a couple of us jocks got thrown in as cheerleaders. Later, I got involved in some travel plays...
Later, I got involved in some traveling plays, um, Junior Miss Oregon. I graduated high school in three years. I went to Southwestern Oregon Community College at night while I was in high school to get the extra credits to be able to graduate and then I moved up here to go to Portland State. So graduated at sixteen.
Wow.
Had my birthday party on Friday. That was Friday. Saturday was my birthday, Sunday I moved out.
This is great.
Thank you to all of you.
I have a kid thing I gotta run, but um, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Of course you can. Thank you so much. Sorry if I talk too much.
No, you're good, you're good. No, terrific.